This study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:02 PM on Tuesday, September 2020 in room 137 of the Addison Building. Present is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Here.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Marvin.
Here.
Ms. Nathan.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Sheriff Seelinger.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Superintendent? I believe the superintendent said there were no changes.
No approval.
Seconded, Schlusner.
The agenda with no changes has been moved and seconded. Ms. Edgar.
Aye.
Mr. Barlow.
Aye.
Ms. Marvin.
Aye.
Ms. Nathan.
Aye.
Mr. Schlusner.
Aye.
Sheriff Seelinger.
Aye.
Ms. Workman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Item 7.01, School Resource Officers Discussion Item. If you allow me, I will make a few introductory comments. We have a full house tonight, house. Just me and Wendy here in the boardroom though. Superintendent, Mr. Sheridan, do you want to introduce everyone at the beginning or have them introduce themselves as they speak? Do you have a preference?
I'll do the first introduction to Chief Franklin and then the officers will introduce themselves as they go along.
Great, thank you. Our presentation this evening is for information only, and this is to help the Board and the community understand the purpose and work of student resource officers. We'd like to thank all our participants for your willingness to join us this evening for our study session. Please know that we are talking about a program, concept, and positions of school resource officers. We are not talking about individuals who currently are serving or have served in these positions. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Munoz. Can anyone else hear the superintendent?
No.
Okay. I think Wendy's coming in.
It looks like he has his mute slash thing is on.
Should we go on superintendent or would you like to say introductory remarks? Okay, great, all right. Mr. Sheridan, can you do the introductory remarks next, please?
Sure. Good evening, Board members and all the participants that are in this meeting. Just as a quick introduction of my role within the district, one of the duties that I have is I'm the district representative that works with the School Resource Officer Program, including all the school resource officers, and I meet with them on a regular basis, on a quarterly basis at least, where we go over a wide variety of topics, where we discuss roles in the district, trends that they're seeing, and try to figure out how I can support them and what they can do to help support the district. On addition, on a fairly regular basis, I'm their contact person for, for instance, if there's an incident that's occurring near one of our neighborhood schools or occurring in the neighborhood near one of our schools, they'll call to inform me so that I can take appropriate action by contacting the principal if there's a safety or security concern. And instances such as that, they contact me any time of the day or night, and they are a resource for the district as well, particularly through me, that if we have anything that occurs either during regular business hours or even after hours, they're a resource for me to call, which I do on a regular basis to get information of things that we hear or see or incidents that might be happening in or near our schools, where we're seeking some information to make sure that we maintain that safety at school. So tonight, the Police Department, the SROs, the supervisors of the SROs, they've created a PowerPoint presentation that they want to present to the Board, and as an introduction to that, Chief James Franklin is here to provide a few words to start off their presentation program. So I'll turn it over to you, Chief Franklin.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Jim Franklin, Police Chief, Superintendent Munoz, members of the School Board, community members, and our partners from the Rochester School District team. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share our story. It really is a story of a 30-year collective partnership between the Rochester School District and the Rochester Police Department and the community that we serve together. When I arrived here in Rochester about two years ago, I was excited to build a 21st Century Policing Department, built on trust and legitimacy as a primary pillar. A key part of that is creating positive connections between law enforcement officers and young people. As a former school resource officer myself, I have seen firsthand the value of a well-run school resource officer program. It creates this foundation for growing that trust and legitimacy among the youth, their parents, and the community at large. During a deep dive and reviewing of Rochester's programming, I quickly discovered that the SRO program was meeting and exceeding my expectations of engaging this community at the highest possible level. I want to take just a couple of minutes to thank both Scott Sheridan for his partnership, and I want to commend Superintendent Munoz for his partnership and his leadership of the schools and within this community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to those officers that have contributed to this rich history.
I'm hoping everybody can see my screen. My name is Captain Jeff Stillwell. I'm the captain of the Community Services Team. For 26 years, I have been a resident of this city. My children graduated from Rochester Public Schools, and now my oldest granddaughter is a public school student. I've also served this community as a Rochester Police Officer. While working with Chief Franklin to transform the RPD into a premier 21st Century Police Department, it became apparent that we needed to form a Community Services Division dedicated to advancing the 21st Century pillars for the department, our partners, and the community we serve. We immediately realized moving SROs to Community Services would not only build on the legacy of creating non-enforcement opportunities for positive interaction between youth and the police, but also would provide us a model and lessons learned as we constructed new programs. As we began planning for our first major outreach event, Safe City Nights, the school district was an ideal partner. Neighborhood schools were the perfect place for these community gatherings and a great opportunity to show that schools really do represent more than just space for academic learning. It's no coincidence that both lieutenants that are assigned to the Community Engagement Team are former SROs. Likewise, many of the Police Department's most trusted leaders have served in the SRO program and use that experience to embrace 21st Century policing principles in their current assignments. With that, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Thompson.
Thank you, Captain. Good evening. I also want to thank the Rochester School District again for this opportunity to share our story, recognize the relationship spanning three decades. My name is Josh Thompson. Actually, I've been with the department here for about 20 years, and I'm actually a Rochester School District graduate from 1993 myself. Currently, I'm a lieutenant with our Community Engagement Team, which is responsible for overseeing the SRO program, our Hospital Resource Officer program, and our Community Service Officers. I'm also a former SRO. Some of the most effective and engaging police work I was ever involved in took place during the five years I served in that position. The connections I was able to make had a lasting impact on me and also strengthened our community relationships. Our SRO program has served as a model for other important community policing programs as well, including Mayo's Hospital Resource Officer Program. Mayo wanted the HRO program to connect the police and St. Mary's Hospital in a way that strengthens relationships and builds trust between the police and their patients and staff. Mayo reviewed our SRO program descriptions and goals, in fact, and wanted a similarly run program. It is also the same community engagement emphasis that was used to create our Downtown Beat Officer Program. We piloted that program with our school resource officers during the summer months because of those officers' vast skill set. As you can see, our department is dedicated to a policing philosophy that prioritizes building positive community relationships. Our intentions and the way we approach our policing is no different in the school environment. Our school resource officers, day in and day out, are building relationships, making a positive impact on the lives of students, their families, and school staff, which you're going to see highlighted by experiences from the SROs themselves. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to School Resource Officer Pat Kelly to provide a glimpse of an SRO's daily schedule.
Thank you for having us this evening. I am Pat Kelly. I'm the SRO at Mayo High School. I've been tasked with kind of giving you a little idea of what a typical day at a high school or middle school for the resource officers is. And what we do is we start out our day getting there before that first bell rings, interacting with students, being in the hallways, the lobbies, maybe take a walk in the parking lot or a drive-through there. When we get back in after that first bell rings, we generally touch base with administration, see if there's any issues that have occurred, we can go over that, and generally, all of our doors are open the rest of the day, which is a really good time for students to come and talk to us, which they do pretty constant. We do have a three-hour block of lunch at each of the high schools, so we do spend a lot of time in the cafeterias and mingling with students and staff during that time. Until the end of the day, which is roughly 3 o'clock, 3:03, we are out and about and available for staff questions, student questions, any concerns that they have. Ultimately, we, at the end of the day, will go out in the lobbies again, and at Mayo High School, everything clears out at 3:15, the students are asked to exit the building, and our day is over at about 3:15, 3:30 after that. At this time, I'd like to share with you, I guess it's a story you'd call it, and I want to recount an ongoing interaction that I had with a particular student. And I hope that can shed at least a little light on why I feel so strongly about the role of the SRO in our communities and how it has the potential to make a significant difference in the continuing relationships between law enforcement and the citizens that we serve. So a little more than five years ago, while interacting with a middle school student during recess, I observed one student in a verbal disagreement with a staff member. So in an effort to help the staff member redirect the student, I challenged the student, then a sixth grader, to a 20-yard footrace to the end of the end zone on the football field. I won, which was a great talking point for years to come, and I knew that someday he was going to beat me, and I couldn't wait. It was an awesome tool for conversation. I continued to deal with the student at the school regularly, some were positive interactions and some not, but we understood each other and worked together to make school a good place for the student to continue to be. The student and their family moved out of state for two years, but then last fall, they returned to Rochester. I happened to be in the hallways, they walked towards the administration office at the student's new high school. After a moment of realizing who it was, Mom gave me the most surprising hug ever, and she said, "This is Officer Kelly, you're in this school, you're going to be all right." Because the duration of our relationship now stretches over the course of years rather than isolated occasional interactions, the student in this story knows they can come to my office when things might not be going so well for them during the day. My last interaction with the student was a day last March. The student came to my office distressed and said, "Man, I am freaking out, Mom forgot my meds today, and I'm not looking to start any fights." I was able to bring that student home, talk to Mom, get the medications, and bring the student back to school to finish out the day. Due to my ongoing relationship with the student as a function of my SRO position within the schools, I was able to proactively help prevent a situation that could have resulted in me having to issue a citation. There's no question in my mind that going out of our way to proactively help students and families pays far more in dividends in the long run for both the individuals and our community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Hodgman. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jennifer Hodgman. During my four years as an SRO sergeant, I was assigned to a middle school, and in that position, I had the opportunity to interact on a daily basis with students and families. One adolescent that left an impact with me was a male who I got to meet a few weeks into the school year. This male was struggling to attend school, and once there, he struggled to stay at school and often needed behavioral interventions. Slowly, I began to provide some additional supports to this male. Together, we came up with a plan that on certain days, I would pick him up and drive him to school, allowing him to listen to whatever music he wanted in my unmarked squad car. He was also allowed to earn lunch with me for consecutively staying in school for our agreed-upon amount of days. Throughout this time that I spent with him, we spoke at length about his family, their living situation, and the reasons that he felt he could not be in school. It was during these conversations I learned that he lived in an abusive home. His mother's boyfriend was both physically and emotionally abusive to his mother and his little sister. His mother had significant health issues and could not work, making her rely on her boyfriend for financial resources. This young male often told me he felt it was his responsibility to stay home and protect his mom and sister. You see, he felt that when he was home, they would not be beaten or threatened with abuse. I often met with this male and spoke with him about the many resources that his mother and his family could access. He frequently told me that due to his mother's health conditions, she did not have friends in Rochester as they were not originally from here, and there was no one else around that would be able to help them. I would again provide resources and attempt to connect with them with additional supports. One day, as I was in my office, this male came to me asking if I could help his mother move some of their stuff out. He went on to tell me that she was finally strong enough to pack up some of their things, and today was the day that she was strong enough to make that decision that she finally wanted to move out. He said that between the two of us, we could get most of their items moved out before the boyfriend would return home from work. So I assisted them with moving their items into a small storage location, and I set them up for a place to stay at the women's shelter until his mom was able to work with social services and set up her own housing. I maintained contact with this family the entire time, ensuring that they were safe and that the boyfriend was abiding by the order for protection. Knowing the family would have limited items when they moved into their new home together, I enlisted the help of teachers who I knew took a special interest in seeing that this male was successful. Together, we were able to get beds and household essentials donated so they could each have their own bed and no longer have to sleep on the couch or the floor. The male and I continued to work towards his goal of being successful in school while he struggled with the pressures to stay home. As Christmas drew closer, we focused on his school behavioral plan and attendance, with his reward ultimately being that I would take him Christmas shopping. He was able to meet his goals, and on the last day of school before Christmas break, we went shopping. He was given an amount of money that he could spend, and he ended up only selecting three items: a snow globe with the year on it for his mom, a doll for his sister, and a video game for himself. I was also able to sign him up for our Police Athletic League's annual event called Shop with a Cop. He was then able to select additional gifts for his family. He later on went on to tell me that this is one of the best Christmases that he had ever had. For the remainder of the school year, we worked together on his behavioral plan. Some of the weeks, obviously, were better than others, and in the end, his mom and sister were able to remain free from domestic abuse, and he was able to be successful and move on to eighth grade. And with that, I will pass it on to Officer Arzola. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. This is Officer Al Arzola, and the SRO assigned to Willow Creek and John Adams Middle Schools. And I'm also going to share an account of pretty much bonding with the student. Last year was my first year as an SRO, which has been a very rewarding experience for me, and I hope it continues. Last school year, I developed a strong rapport with a middle school student that was known to staff for losing their temper and being involved in many fights. I actually first met the student while I was intervening in an altercation between him and another student. After that, I made it a point to take every opportunity I could to greet and talk to the student. Those simple interactions eventually built a good rapport, built on trust and legitimacy. After a while, the student began to approach me on their own, just for simple conversation and just to talk about stuff that was going on inside the school. Student eventually asked me for guidance and advice on how to avoid getting into altercations on several occasions. He even offered to tell other kids in the school that, you know, hey, Officer Al is a good guy and he's okay to talk to. Students sometimes would struggle with staff, and when I would show up, all I had to say was, "Hey, man, let's go for a walk," and he would come with me, no problems. During one of those walks, he mentioned to me that he would never use violence against me or any other officer, for that matter. Throughout the school year, there was a notable decrease in the outbursts that he was having and the number of arguments and fights that he was getting involved in, and I do believe that's in part because of the rapport that I developed with that student. I almost got the feeling that he didn't want to disappoint me, which is a good feeling. With that, I'll pass on to Officer Marks.
Good evening. My name is Greg Marks, and I'm the School Resource Officer at John Marshall High School. A lot of our interactions happen at the middle school and high school level between us and students and staff, but we are here to support all the other buildings in the district as well. One of my more memorable experiences was at one of our elementary schools in the district. We got a call one day that a student was displaying some behavioral issues and placing staff in harm's way, and the student had actually left the building with staff trying to corral him and bring him back to the building for a safe environment. That student was walking down the sidewalks and into the roadway, and that's when the school called me and asked for assistance to make sure that nobody got hurt. When I got up to that area and found the staff and the student, they were already coming back into the school, and when they got back into the school, then I just went in to make sure that everything was still okay. While I was doing that, I struck up a conversation with that student and kind of asked him what he was upset about, and we had a good lengthy conversation, which ended with him asking me if I'd be able to join him for lunch. And that day, I was not able to, but I told him that if he met some classroom goals and did what he was supposed to do, that I would definitely come in and have lunch with him. About a week later, I got a phone call from the staff member after checking in on daily basis and said that student had met his goals. Made it up there for lunch that day, and he and I had a great lunch together, and he had a chance to sit down with the police officer at lunchtime and kind of show that off to his friends. So that student was really excited about that experience, went home, talked to Mom about it. Mom was grateful for the interaction with myself and that we kept that student in school and in the learning environment. That, I'm going to turn it over to Officer Julie Clayman.
Good evening, and let me start off by saying thank you for allowing us, SROs, to come in and talk with you guys and tell you a little bit about what we do and our role. So I'm currently the School Resource Officer at the Kellaw Middle School and the Century High School. I spend my time going between both schools, and I consider myself an officer who leads with her heart. Often, my day is filled with connecting with students and getting to know them. In 2018, we had two new students come to the middle school from out of town. I was told that these two girls had some troubles in the school they were coming from. They had been in multiple fights and often skipped class. Within about a week of these two girls starting school with us, they were wandering the halls and getting into confrontations with other students. I tried to connect with the girls right away, but got the brush off from both of them. I wasn't going to let this stop me, however, and I still continued to try to connect with them. About a month later, the girls were transferred to another school as their family moved over to that area of town. However, about two months after that, one of the two girls returned to my school. She was an eighth-grade student. This student began to walk the halls again, get into fights, and carried a tough-girl image. There were times I had to talk with her about incidents that she was involved in. I continued to talk with her in the hallways or the lunchroom, even though she didn't really want to talk with me. Eventually, she started to warm up to me and even began seeking me out. One day, she came to my office and asked if she could come in and talk. She sat down and started to pour out some stories to me that I couldn't believe. This young girl had gone through so much in her life in such a short time. She said she struggles with trusting anyone, as everyone has let her down. She talked about how things at home were not good, and she was so stressed out with life. As she began to trust me more and more, she would come to me for advice. I remember one day when the student needed a ride to school, so I went to go pick her up. It happened to be her lunch hour, so I asked if she wanted to go out to eat. She looked at me and said, "You're going to take me out for lunch?" with an astonished look on her face. I told her yes, and we went to Chipotle, as she mentioned she had never been there. She connected with me throughout the summer via text, and I would check in with her from time to time. I often sent her inspirational quotes, and she would just laugh and say, "Okay, Officer Clayman." When she started school in the fall of 2019, her bad habits were surfacing again. I would talk with her about them and often told her to keep focused. She was going to attend her first homecoming dance that year, but didn't have a dress. I assisted in getting her one and promised her mother that I would drive her home from the dance, so she wouldn't have to worry about her being out late. I often talked to the student's mother and kept her in the loop with things. Her mother would reach out to me as well if she needed to talk to me with her daughter about certain things. Things began to get really bad at home. This student expressed to the school social worker that she didn't feel safe at home and couldn't be there. We tried to find emergency housing for her at the time, but there was no such place. The Alston County Social Worker assigned to her said they were working on a placement in a foster home, but there wasn't any availability at the moment. The student was in tears and said there was just no way she could go home. I offered to take the student home and have her stay with me for the weekend. I had an extra bedroom and three kids of my own who were her same age. My own kids were looking forward to her coming as they had heard stories about her from me. The student and my children became quick friends. She eventually went to her foster home the following week. However, she has since returned home to her family, but she comes over to my home to visit or stay from time to time. I even took her on vacation with us this summer. She says when she is at my home around my kids, it is stress-free and she can just be a kid and relax. She still hasn't told me everything that she has gone through, but she knows I'm here for her. Just last week, she called me screaming, saying she needed help. I, along with another officer, went to her home where there was a domestic situation going on between her and her mother. After things calmed down, the student's mother and I agreed that she should come and stay with me for a short time. She stayed for a bit, but was then returned home. The county social worker is working with the family. The school social worker and I are currently working on some things for the student as well. It is unfortunate we are not in school at the present moment to stay connected to our students, as I think they need us as much as we need them. Thank you, and I will turn it over to Sergeant Lowry.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Lowry. I've been the SRO sergeant for the past five years. This has allowed me the unique position to see how our positive relationship has grown between the school district and the Police Department. Some of the reason for that growth, I believe, are the special activities and the programs that the SROs are involved with. The Seaball Challenge, anyone close to the school district know how large and meaningful that program's become. Mock Crash, the peer student groups, classroom presentations, which involve drugs, alcohol, vaping, internet safety. We also have involvement, as previously mentioned, with the Police Athletic Group. The one thing that, the common ground with all these activities are the fact that the SROs try to build rapport, coach, and mentor through this education. SROs try to build rapport, coach, and mentor through this education. They're educating the children on safe habits. Another program we do is the Threat Assessment. So the Threat Assessment Team has been a great partnership between the school and the police department. The police department is a multidisciplinary team dedicated to preventing targeted acts of violence. Typically, where this comes into play is in the middle of the night or in the evening, someone posts something on social media, whether it's reference to there's going to be some sort of violence that may occur in the school, whether the next day or whatever. We are instantly on that. Normally, as Scott said, we're available 24 hours a day, and we have that direct link with the school. And then we immediately begin to vet that threat to try and find out if it is legitimate, if it's a hoax, where is the person who made the threats? Are they local? Are they in the wind? We do a lot of efforts, and then we circle up with the school administration and try to formulate the appropriate response of how they want to open up the school. Our goal is to minimize the disruption in learning. It's very important. And to go back to this, our Threat Assessment is to prevent the violence, prevent the targeted acts of violence. It's very difficult to tell how many crimes we've prevented, but there's been numerous times during the middle of the night that we have dealt with these incidents and, once again, minimize the disruption of learning, and the school is able to open as normal. Next are some other areas that the school is involved with. The SRO, the community services, we have a team approach. Part of that team approach is all the SROs are part of the diversion panel. So when a juvenile goes in front of probation, we keep it noncriminal resolution, where we would work with them to try to mediate problems in diversion. And it's a great face-to-face where we have the ability and the space to interact with the family and the other stakeholders with that child. So once we see that they have a circle of people that are really supporting the success of that child, that's a great opportunity for us to do that. And then the tag team on that is restorative justice. I'm a member of the Juvenile Justice Committee, and a few months ago, we listened to a presentation from Three Rivers, and they were proposing to do a pilot program this fall involving restorative justice. Unfortunately, with COVID, we were not able to fully establish this pilot program. It's very similar to diversion, where we're trying to have noncriminal resolutions. You know, we want to keep juveniles out of the criminal justice system. Restorative justice, in theory, should give us a quicker response to try to mediate the disagreement or whatever happened. Sometimes, when juveniles go to diversion, it can be weeks or months later. Restorative justice, I think, would allow a more immediate conclusion to that. And to top that, our program here in Rochester is a model school resource program. I've been contacted by the Minnesota School Safety Center, and we've done numerous trainings, where we train other agencies in the state of how we do things here in Rochester, because we feel it's working, we have a great partnership, it's a tremendous value to both the police department and the school district, and we teach that model throughout the state. We continue our education on crisis intervention, implicit bias, de-escalation, juvenile case law, as well as dangerous trends, new drugs out there, websites, apps, you name it. And a lot of this is done at the Minnesota Juvenile Officers Association Conference, and that's a yearly thing that the SROs attend. I would like to now turn the presentation over to Lisa Weber.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Weber. I am a former SRO with RPS and the Rochester Police Department. I was SRO for five years at Mayo, Willow, and the Elementary feeder schools. For me, what was so wonderful was the amount of time that I was in the buildings and the chance to work with kids and families. I was able to spend seven hours a day, five days a week, with kids. This gave me the time to really get to know the students and for the kids to get to know me. As parents, we all know when something is not right or when things are a little off with our kids. As an SRO, you notice the kids that are eating alone, the kids that you see every day that walk by or stop in your office, and then one day, you realize you haven't seen them for a day or two, and you wonder if they're okay. I knew the kids, and I could tell when they were having a bad day or if they needed someone to check in with them. How do you measure the impact that SROs have with kids? You may never know what was prevented because you made that time to talk to a student, have them sit in your office to chill, or you gave them something to eat. As an SRO, there are opportunities to connect with kids and parents at all levels, at all times of the day and/or night. As an SRO, you are connecting with students and parents in the school, outside the school, outside the school walls, and outside of the school hours. Parents and kids would call after hours because they were dealing with a bullying situation, a suicide attempt, a sex assault, a fire at their home, and the reasons go on and on. Parents and students call, and they talk to who they have a relationship with and who they trust, and many times, that is with our SROs. For me, I can share that my role as an SRO and the relationships that I have with students and parents is still having an impact today. I am currently working for RPS, and this spring, while out doing a home visit, I was stopped by a young man and his mom as they were driving through the parking lot. As I was walking through the lot, I hear a voice calling out, "Officer Weber, Officer Weber, mind you, I'm wearing a dress and sandals." I immediately recognized this young man and his mom. I've now known the family for over 10 years. I reminded him, "I'm retired, I'm no longer an officer," and he said, "It doesn't matter. It really doesn't matter, I'm gonna always know you as Officer Weber." I asked him if he was doing okay, and he said, "No, no, I'm not. Would you have time to come see me?" After my home visits that day, I spent an hour with this young man to offer support, answer questions, and to listen. Remember, it takes a village, and the SROs are an important part of that village. Thanks for letting me share.
With that, this is Captain Stoll again. Myself and the chief and the rest of the team is staying on, and we know you probably have some questions. We just felt it vitally important to let these officers share their stories.
Thank you. Mr. Sheridan, Mr. Superintendent Munoz, did you want to have board questions for the officers now, or would you like to go forward with any other presenters?
No, at this time, this is the opportunity to ask questions of the officers or myself, and we'll answer them as best we can.
Great. Thank you. Director Marvin.
Thank you so much for those stories, and I know that you've had, I know many of you and have done some wonderful things for our kids, and so appreciative. One question we get, though, is with the kinds of things you've been talking about, would these be the same kind of services that a social worker could do? You know, what's the value added of having an officer rather than a social worker form these kind of relationships with kids?
Well, I think from our perspective, it's not an either-or proposition, that even in the community, social workers can do a lot, and we would expect that social workers in the schools, you know, do many things. But again, they can't go it alone either. We live in times where, you know, there's people in all kinds of crises, and sometimes you need that safety presence there to do the work. I think some kids are just like some adults. They would rather talk to a principal or a SRO or a social worker. Again, I don't think it's one size fits all. I think you need a robust team to ensure success, and that's really what we're all about here. And just sort of how we're dealing with the rest of the community, we really believe this fits into our program. But our after-school providers and our non-government organizations that are working with at-risk youth are begging us for more contact because they see that we're trying to build relationships here and that they all, and we work with Hope Views, the Boys and Girls Club, the barber shop, I can go on and on, that the SROs are doing great work, but sometimes that message and that positivity is overrun by media, by pop culture, and even sometimes by family members. So again, we see it as a, you know, it takes the whole system to work.
If I could expand on that.
Go ahead.
Chair Seelinger, we also have people on the screen here, the administrators of our high schools, an administrator from one of the middle schools, and those administrators work real closely with the SROs as well, and they may have some comments that they want to provide as well, or they can answer any questions that you might have as far as what type of role they see, what the role the SROs are in their buildings as well.
Thank you. Board members, do you have anything else for our officers? Yes, Director Nathan.
Thank you, Chair Seelinger. I was looking at some of the items that were on page 11 of the PowerPoint on the special activities and programs, and I was trying to get a sense of, you know, when you talked about your day and how you start the day in the hallways, and then you're in your office, I'm just trying to get a sense of how many encounters you have with students where you're in front of them as opposed to just passing them in the hallway. So I'm trying to get a sense of, like, do all of you do the classroom presentations? Are they multiple times a year? Like, how many classrooms do you think you get into? Because that's more of an intimate kind of, you know, closer to the students in a group. So can you give me more of an idea of those kinds of things?
Chris or Pat?
This is Pat. Can everybody hear me? Generally, at Mayo, and I know at the other schools, that we'll put on an entire school presentation, which takes a couple of days, kind of on the hot topics of the year, which they vary. In the last five years, it's something new every year. So we hit on those topics, whether it's internet safety, vaping, things like that. At my school, we generally, I get requests by teachers to present basic safety things, safety questions in about any class. I've been in a home ec class before. So I would say probably 10 times a year that I'd go to a classroom, and for sure, at least one or two all-school in the auditorium-type of presentations. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Did any other officer want to weigh in? Before we go to Director Barlow, did any other officer want to weigh in about, I think what Director Nathan is getting at is sort of the, you know, time spent with students in front of students. So any other thing to share? I'll give you a few moments, but... Okay, we'll go to Director Barlow.
Excellent presentation. Actually, it went exactly the way I thought it would. A lot of great things were mentioned and said, and speaks to the value of the program. Yet, I just have a couple of questions. I am aware that some questions relative to data were forwarded to the Rochester Police that will probably be addressed later. Hopefully, if not, I'll bring them up later. But do you think in any way that the wearing of the uniform, the badge, the gun, how does that position you differently than, say, oh, the social worker, the counselor, even the teacher, as it may relate to talking to Johnny or Sally?
So I'll just start on that, Mr. Barlow. We have been in the schools in the first several years. I think Officer Weber was there during the transition, where we were wearing just straight plainclothes. We're not opposed to a discussion about a different attire. Again, we're not set one way, but what our officers tell us is it really doesn't make a difference, because what we're trying to do here is build relationships where we don't judge people by the uniform they're wearing. And we see, when our cops, our SROs, go into elementary schools, kids, again, you've heard the stories about lunch. I went and read to my granddaughter's first-grade class, and everybody in the school wanted to sit by me at lunch. So we're cognizant of the fact that it may cause alarm. We want it to be clear that we are police, both for the students' sake. We don't want anybody to ever accuse us of trying to trick them or anything like that. There are people out there that don't belong in the schools that try to get in. It's important that they're easily recognizable, and if there is an emergency in the school, whether it's a medical emergency, fire, anything, it's nice for the other responders to be able to see them, the uniform, and easily identify them. Now, we can overcome all that, we can get them vests or something. So again, this isn't a real, we don't have a hard position on this, right? We believe whatever works for the students work, but what our officers are telling us is it's just really not that big of a deal. And perhaps that's because the students that it is a big deal with aren't interacting with them as much. Again, I don't think we, as far as the chief, and he's on, I don't want to speak for him and me, I really, I want them in there building relationships. I don't care if they're in gym shorts and t-shirts.
Well, and so I know the power of the badge and the uniform. I wore one for 27 years as a firefighter, so I get what you're saying and can appreciate and value that, and know directly how, you know, students, because I often found myself in the schools. But that being said, I'm also curious then for those who may react in the exact opposite direction, the sight of a, well, let me speak candidly, because of trauma, things that have no, that aren't under your control, if you will, but perhaps because of the trauma they've been exposed to, the reality they have seen, lived, the sight of an officer and/or the sound of an officer saying, "Come here," or "Would you come here?" I don't want to cast this in a negative light, but just simply creating awareness that through our district surveys, for the most part, students felt quite favorable toward SROs, and yet, for the 0.99% of our students who are referred to law enforcement, it's a different dynamic. And I was hoping to maybe hear something regarding how those efforts are occurring to engage them, those who are already, if you will, identified and a part of the system, and what you're doing specifically to assist them. As you know, the majority of the law enforcement referrals are in areas such as, you know, alcohol, drugs, tobacco, paraphernalia, okay? Additionally, the areas of fighting, threats, violence, physical aggression, and bullying. And I was just curious, because I haven't heard anything regarding that yet, but maybe after the data is presented, that information will be presented then.
I'll just add one thing. We are working with some of our partners. We realize that we have to use trauma-informed best practices, and we have an we have to use trauma-informed best practices, and we haven't always done this in this industry in general. We've done better in the schools than we do in some other areas. But again, you know, I, I think all these things, we want to take a trauma-based approach, particularly when we're dealing with students with, with those experiences you're, you're talking about. And, and it's very concerning to me and, and that we are, it's why it's so important that this team that's in there and is highly trained. I can't train 90 patrol officers to understand the dynamics of trauma. I, I can, I can try, right? But in, if you're in a setting like the Phoenix Academy, or, or, you know, the, some of the alternative schools, there's a lot of dynamics. My cops need feedback from the staff there about, about these things. They, they need, that's who is going to mentor them in, in those type of traumas, trauma-based approach. Just the significant of touch on somebody that has a real high childhood trauma is something that most police officers never think, or have never thought about till now. But we are committed, we are committed to doing whatever it takes to make sure that officers that enter school property and deal with our children are trained higher than, to the highest level, that they understand the dynamics of childhood trauma on behavior. And, and again, I think we do that better together. I, I think that's my point, but...
And, and so, and Matt, I'm sure this will be my final response prior to the data component. But in light of the fact that, are there specific strategies then that RPD employs, in light of the fact that Hispanic English learners, special education, free reduced lunch, Black multirace students are referred disproportionately to their enrollment? So the question then becomes, are there special skill sets that officers, these SROs have in light of that reality, that the referrals are going to probably be, you know, number one, 100, 220 referrals, 180 students that have more than one. So you're pretty much dealing with, out of 18,000 students, you know, again, less than, that's 0.99%. But without awareness, I do know you referenced, or I saw implicit bias training, which hopefully is that more than just the check of a box, or how do you modify behavioral change as it may relate to, okay, our officers are highly trained, they have received this particular training in particular, specifically, and now how do we see that it relates to how they interact and how they deal with? Is it possible to speak to that?
Sure. Well, first of all, those numbers are heartbreaking to us, just like they are to you, sir. It's unacceptable that we haven't got a handle on this better than we have, and we are committed to, to that change. We are working with a variety of grassroots groups to get real people that live in this community, not, not that make policy and, and run big organizations and all that, but grassroots families. We will launch a community liaison program in the coming months, which will start with our officers having really tough conversations with people of color that have been run over by this system. And we're proud of that, and, and we'll continue to be proud of that. Our school resource officers will be, will be, as long as they're in the schools, the highest, the high, most highly trained. Again, we're going to put on a class about dealing with pre-teens and teens in a school setting and what trauma looks like. We are, we are working at the grassroots level to make sure that this police department gets a hold of those numbers, does a deep dive and figures out why. And every person on this call that works in my division knows that every referral to the criminal justice system is a failure in my eyes, every single one. Because either we didn't intervene soon enough, or, or, you know, we, we took the easy way out when we, we could have, we could have found a service there. But they're committed to that. We're committed to get a handle on this data. The data is inconsistent in, in how it's reported. You know, if, if tonight somebody pulls somebody over in front of Mayo High School and they're drunk driving, it's going to show that there was an arrest at Mayo High School. We, we need to filter that out and really start dealing with these kids, because when these kids get in the system, it's nearly impossible to get them out. Again, and we look at ourselves in the diversion program is, in reality, they're already in a police report at that time. There's already been contact. So, so that's why we're trying to move the needle even farther, because once they're in, it is really hard. The criminal justice system doesn't release people very well, right, until they hit rock bottom.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm not sure who was responding to that, so thank you, officer. I'll just say thank you, officer. And thank you, Director Barlow, for bringing up those questions. And we will certainly get to the data, circle back, don't worry. But if I do forget, please remind me. We'll go next to Director Workman.
Thank you. I know that the pandemic has really kind of thrown everybody for a loop. So I want to know, or maybe you could tell us, what kinds of interactions do you have with students now during the, during distance learning? Have you changed your approach at all? If you could just review that a little bit with me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So, much like the district, we're learning as we go. We are help, work, we were working earlier in the spring with being, having our SROs help make those connections with students that the other schools' resources couldn't get a hold of, to, to make sure they were doing their distance learning. We're working with a couple after-school programs, one being Hope Views, to get kids to, they have a learning center there. So, so we are working to get kids that don't have access to the technology they need to succeed through distance learning into those sites. Most of those kids are students at Rosa Parks Charter School. Our SROs are back in the schools now, and I don't, I don't want to, if either Chris or one of the SROs, or maybe even Scott probably knows exactly everything that's going on since we've returned to school, I'm sort of out of the loop from that, that, that time.
Scott, do you have some, would you like to take that? What are our SROs doing while our, most of our students are distance learning and out of the buildings, or would you like to pass that to someone else?
Well, I know they're working in the buildings, and I, I think it should come from them as far as what their daily duties are now during pandemic. One of the high schools?
I can talk. If it's all right, I'll talk. I'm Rob Scripture. I'm the principal at Phoenix Academy. Our kids are in school four days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So it's been a little bit different with, with the COVID going on. The SRO, Officer Fordham's usually much more involved, kind of walking around. And then, and we've kind of had him in the hallway at the beginning of the day, but then in, in his office, just trying, we're trying to keep the pods as pure as possible. But I think the biggest thing that's been the change coming out of COVID is the mental health of, of the kids. I mean, I'm at Phoenix, it's high risk, but we, we've had more mental health stuff the first month than, and he's been involved in that. We had a student last week that, to give you an example, you know, just a typical week, the kid was very suicidal, was upset, kind of verbally going at me outside. I gave him space, time, then we switched off to Officer Fordham. Officer Fordham actually went up and asked him if he wanted McDonald's, which de-escalated him right away. But then came the emotion of kind of what's going on. Dad lost his job, they didn't have any working cars, and we were able to work with Officer Fordham, our school social worker, and get the kid the help that he needed. Then in that same week, just the typical week, missing student, student didn't come home at night. Got an email from the parent, very concerned, didn't know. If you hear something, let me know. Officer Fordham was able to hear that there was an interaction with this child, with the patrol, street patrol. So we were able to give mom a call and say, we know he's okay, we don't know where he's exactly at, but he's, he's safe, that, that kind of stuff. And then we had a fight, you know. So you, you get a fight, and you get two 17-year-old guys trying to physically harm each other. Officer, I had, I had to physically intervene. I was in between. I think this is the thing that no data is ever going to show. I was able to break the fight up, physically move the student down to my office. Officer Fordham did not need to say a word, but I was not hit. I was not kicked, I was not elbowed. And I, my personal belief is, with law enforcement sitting right there, created a much safer issue. No one got a ticket. We were able to calm everybody down. But I, I've been at Phoenix, I think this is my sixth year, going on my seventh, and before, right before I took it, we didn't have the SROs. And, and they literally showed me video of teachers being chased down the hallway by kids that were going to attack them, you know. And that is all went away at Phoenix. And I, I believe a big part of that is the work of the SRO and the relationships they've developed with these kids to try to de-escalate the, the behavior. And just the mental health of where people are at with the COVID and those relationships were huge. I think Mr. Barlow mentioned, you know, the, the kids that are at high risk and that have, are in the system, for lack of a better word. I was concerned about that when we started the year, because I, I don't want my kids experiencing any additional trauma. They, they've had enough. And so we kind of, to be real honest, we kind of held Officer Fordham kind of back the first day. We didn't want the kids to have to come into school and see a police officer, because we didn't know how they would react. And our two kids that have probably had the most interaction were in the school for less than five minutes, and were asking where he was at. And then we got him, and they were teasing each other and giving each other a hard time. And it was really kind of refreshing to see all that work that had been built up. So as long as I got the mic and I'm talking, I'll keep, the other, the other stuff we've done that these guys, they didn't bring up in their presentations, they've been wonderful all the law enforcement agents with the kids at Phoenix. Even the people we call in when our SRO's not here, we've played basketball games. The best picture I got in my whole office is a, a basketball game we played with the Phoenix kids against the, the probation officers, and developing those relationships. Because my personal hope with the program is, my kids are really high-risk, and some of them are going to struggle with mental health their entire life. And I'm hoping that whether it's five years from now, 10 years now, 20 years from now, that if one of them's in a crisis, one of our SROs or law enforcement can show up, have a relationship with them, and de-escalate the situation so we don't have a situation like we've recently seen on TV. So that's, it's kind of a gift that keeps on giving, is my hope. And, and they do, they are there, I, they are there for, there is some safety stuff that goes on that, that in my opinion, a social worker can't do, that you, that you have to have a law enforcement agent. I, I've been there when we've been in lockdown, because they thought a teacher was being held at gunpoint here, and, and we needed law enforcement for that. So I've rambled. I appreciate everyone getting together.
Mr. Scripture, can you speak to, can, because not everybody knows about what goes on at Phoenix and the great work that you and your staff do and the students who are at Phoenix, and maybe how many of them? Just for a little edification of, of all of us, please, talk about your building.
Yeah, I guess the best way to describe it is all of our kids have special needs, they're on an IEP. We don't have any regular ed students in the building. And there's roughly around 80 students who are K through 12, really K through 21. Most of our kids are in that sixth to 20, sixth grade to 21-years-old. And, you know, our goal here is to get kids out of Phoenix. It's just, for whatever reason, whether it's the trauma's popping up or the mental health, they, they need Phoenix for a short term. We've got five mental health practitioners in the, in the Phoenix side that were able to give additional services. And we're really trying to make it a short-term stay and get the kids the skills they need to get them back to their regular building. We roughly transition about 20% of our kids a year back to regular ed, which is kind of our goal.
Thank you. I just didn't want that to, a lot of folks may not, may not have heard that, so I think that's good information to know.
It's a great place with a lot of people that really care about kids that are struggling a little bit.
Yes. And I have, and I have a bench made by some of your students in my apartment.
That's the other thing we do is the wood shop.
You do wood shop. It's awesome. Thank you so much for that, Mr. Scripture. I'm going to go to Director Nathan next.
Thank you. So a lot of the referrals in the past few years have had to do with vaping. And I don't know if this is a question for the superintendent or, or for the police officers, but at some point in the past, the superintendent let us know that Olmsted County was working on a vaping diversion program. Is that part of the, of the diversion categories yet, or is that still being worked on?
Does someone have an answer about the vaping? And yes, I see you, Mr. Johnson. I don't, I don't know.
I can, I can speak to that.
You want to speak to that? Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Sure. Eric Johnson, Principal John Marshall High School. We have started doing the diversion program. We, we began it last fall, and we've seen great success with it for our students who have run into vaping issues. And it's, it's shown a measurable improvement in the number of instances of vaping. And as a result, we really had, I think we've written almost no citations at John Marshall for vaping. It's been great.
Thank you. Was there something else you wanted to, to share right at the moment, Mr. Johnson? Or I hope to hear it more from you later, but since you popped on the screen, I wasn't quite sure what you...
Nope, I can do that later. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Do you have anything else on vaping, Director Nathan? I know you have lots of questions, but...
So are the SROs still involved in the, I know that the, the diversion panel that I think was spoken of earlier is different than the vaping diversion at the building. Is that right?
Yeah. Does someone want to speak to the diversion program at the Law Enforcement Center? I'm assuming that's what you're speaking of, and how that works.
Captain Jeff Stowell again. Again, the diversion program that, that we were speaking, again, we are trying to divert everything like they are at JM before there's ever a ticket written, before there's ever even a police report written. The diversion report that, that the panel that we sit on with the county attorney's probation is a way to, after someone's been ticketed or charged, that they can go through a diversion program. They don't get a conviction. It clears their record. It doesn't, you know, sort of stay there. And, and again, there has to be a supportive system. There's consequences that are not sort of what a criminal justice system would normally look like. And, and we believe about 60% of our cases that actually are being ticketed or cited or, or even arrested for are going through that process. It's harder for us to get that data, because it's a county-run program and they don't break it out by school. We're sort of committed to, to see if we can do better at that. You know, it's tough, there are juvenile records, all those things. But, but again, in general, about 60% of the cases that result in a ticket or a criminal charge end up going through diversion, particularly in, in our, you know, we, we, again, we sit on that panel to sort of, I don't want to say to pass judgment, but with the team and say, what's, what's justice, what can justice look like in this sense that doesn't result in a, in a, in a criminal conviction? And again, we, we feel like the restorative justice is the next step there that we can, because obviously, I know you all realize that we believe that we can help mediate. Oftentimes, if there's a fight at school, that we could mediate. One parent or the other is going to demand a justice system response. And so we really believe that being involved at the frontline level, we can better explain. Again, I think it, it's like a partnership, right? It's the site, the principals and everything do a great job. But, you know, sometimes hearing it from a cop, like, yeah, this is a good resolution. This is ju, this is, just looks different than justice on TV, maybe. But mediation and those types of things. And I believe, or we believe as a team, that taking us out of the schools will make that harder, because when Johnny goes home from school, he's going to get a night shift patrol officer that has, you know, anywhere from six months to three years of experience, whose only tool is to file a police report and send a ticket. And they're, they're, and, and we believe being involved at the front end of a lot of these disputes helps us be another party to help the mediation between parents who really believe justice might look different than we do, or, or again, you know... different than we do, or, or, or again, you know, don't understand uh, the value of keeping things out of the system. I think that's really where restorative justice will end up. That's what we're, that's what we're hoping for and shooting for.
Thank you. And so, um, just to, um, clarifying addition. Um, so something like diversion uh, for students might mean, and I'm, this is my assumption, so please correct me if I'm wrong, uh, something like a community service, uh, you know, restorative payment, a letter of apology, something like that. Um, is that sort of on the right track of?
Correct. That, that's, that's usually what it, what it results in. And if they follow through and no same or similar, it disappears from their, their criminal record or their juvenile record.
Yep. Yep. I'm just, I'm trying to break down. It's not, well, I guess it is jargon. It's your jargon, diversion program. Um, so I'm, I'm working hard on that. Um, I am going to keep us moving along and go to Director Amundson.
Thank you. Um, so this may seem like a very long preamble to my actual questions, but bear with me. Um, I want to start out by saying that, um, your stories were very touching and I, I'm really grateful to have, uh, caring individuals, um, dedicated individuals working with our students. It, it makes me feel safer to know that you're in our buildings and working with our students. But that being said, I think it's important to acknowledge that there are people who do not feel safer because of, uh, police presence in the buildings. And while I may not share their feelings, I think it's really important to acknowledge them. Um, and so from a lot of individuals, you will hear, uh, should we be investing more in social workers instead of police who can do the same types of jobs without, um, portraying, uh, uh, I shouldn't say they're portraying it. I should say some people experience uh, feelings of intimidation or uneasiness or whatever that may be with police presence. So, so we hear from those individuals, um, you know, can't we put the same money towards a social worker and that type of thing? Um, in, in trying to figure out exactly what SROs do with their time, you know, we saw in the presentation that SROs spend a lot of time, um, in the hallways, developing relationships and that type of thing. But, um, I looked at the contract, the service agreement between the school district and the, um, city that lists the actual job duties of SROs. And I know you all don't have that document in front of you, so I'm going to highlight some of them so that you can then answer the questions that I'm still getting to. Um, a lot of them talk about things like enforcement, recovering, um, lost or stolen properties, um, protecting people and property, um, addressing truancy, all that type of thing. So there's what I would consider the legal things that, that police officers do anywhere that they're at. Um, conducting searches when there's reasonable grounds to believe the search will result in discovery, discovery of drugs, weapons, et cetera. All those, I think we can all agree that are strictly police types of, of jobs. Um, it talks about deterring criminal activity. Um, it talks about advising on security vulnerabilities, that type of thing. Then there's the other aspect. Um, it talks about serving as a role model with students. Um, the kinds of things we've talked about with, with, um, being mentors, being, um, resources, uh, developing relationships, giving presentations to promote safety or address drug use. Um, so there's, there's kind of those, those two aspects, the kinds of things that I assume police officers would be doing all the time, whether they were stationed in our buildings or not versus the benefits of having them full-time or nearly full-time in our buildings. So my question, which I'm finally getting to, um, has two parts. Number one, um, to the, to the officers, what do you feel that you spend most of your time doing? And number two, which of those types of jobs or specific, uh, job subcategories would you say is the most important thing that you do that only you could do? So back to the origination of my question, when people say, can't we hire, um, social workers? Can't we hire security? Can't we hire mental health practitioners of, of various types, whatever it be? Um, this, this is, I'd like for someone to make the case to those, those people's points.
Uh, I guess, is, go ahead, somebody jumping in. I don't want to leave you guys hanging for too long.
No, I was just going to say, who's, who's taken that one?
I'll, I'll start. Again, um, uh, you know, I, I think it, like, sometimes it boils down to, um, you, you know, um, all these things are minimized, uh, because we're there in our opinion. Now, um, you know, if you look at what other districts are doing, if, if we want to follow, you know, some bigger cities that have metal detectors and all that, I, I don't see that as a better outcome. And, and I also, again, as a citizen of Rochester, uh, first and foremost, um, the value that this program is providing to this community outside the school setting, and I think that goes to some of, uh, Lisa Weber's comments, is immense. Uh, it, there's no way we could re, we could do that any other way. Uh, um, and, and the fact that our SROs are helping kids long after they've left the school and are the first point of contact i- i- is something that again, is just, uh, you can't put a value on it. And if there's not a police officer there, it's really hard for me, us, any of us to know. And I think it goes to the principal at Phoenix's comments. We don't stat how many loud arguments we didn't have to come to because it never evolved into a fight. We don't stat how many times because SRO has a relationship with a student, we don't have to send a stranger in and use force. Um, so, so again, I think to me, all these things, all the, all the, you know, I, I, I appreciate the question about the law enforcement things. Sure, we would send cops there if there were fights, if, if, if a lot of these things, but I think what you'll find in what we heard in the stories is that it's the one-on-one relationship that, uh, is what they spend the majority of their time on because since they're there, a lot of these other things don't need to be dealt with. Now, I, that, we're not suggesting they should be counselors. We, we believe that, you know, it takes the whole system to, to, to help kids succeed and, and, and all that. So, um, they're not trying to do that job, but, um, they make all these traditional law enforcement functions easier. There was a question submitted to us about the use of force accountability dashboard. We did not, we have not used one, um, we have not had one use of force in a school facility or by any of the team in 2020. Uh, we found two in nineteen where we were helping a parent get their child in their car, which wasn't, was, you know, grab an arm and let's get him in the car and help the parent. Uh, and I think to, uh, particularly some of these students, uh, that have suffered a lot of trauma and, and uh, sometimes, uh, act out, uh, we're showing on a daily basis that we're not having to use force to solve these problems. We're not sending cop into a classroom to drag a kid out, uh, because we just don't have to because the, they know the officer. They have a relationship. And, and, and so again, uh, they have full school days, uh, you know, no days to the same. Sometimes it depends what happened overnight. If there was some tragedy in the community that they have to deal with, some, sometimes it's, it's just all, I, I think Pat Kelly said it, high fives and hugs, uh, which are good days in my view. Uh, but, but again, I, I, I think we see them as just a vital part of the team and, and a different tool in some ways. Uh, both for, uh, students that are experiencing trauma or having trouble, students that aren't, uh, you know, they interact. They don't just interact with kids that are having trouble. They interact with student groups and, and sort of everything we said, we're committed to do better. We've met with school groups during the pandemic, uh, saying, hey, we'll be the, they, they want more access to leaders. Uh, so the SROs can drag the mayor into Mayo High School for that group to meet with. She's agreed to that for us. Um, and, and again, we, we, we just, I don't know how to break it into small pieces because some days they're probably doing a lot of those traditional policing things and some days they're doing none of them.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent, did you want to add some comments here? If you can unmute yourself or figure out your, no. Still shaking your head. No. You can hear us though. Yes. Okay.
Hi, this is Officer Marks, Director.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to touch a little bit on some of the, what, uh, Captain Stillwell had said, and our, our roles in the school is, is really about that relationship building. You know, we work really hard and pride ourselves on the ability to make those relationships with those kids and, um, give them a trusted adult outside of some of the, the school people that they may not feel comfortable with at times. Um, some of the kids are involved in issues at school and don't feel that they can go to the principal or the teacher and they want somebody outside of that school environment and they feel that we can be that person. I, I think it's important that we are able to work with them and, you know, go for a walk with them and go check on them as well, you know, we can, we can leave that school building to go make sure that they're going to get to school all right when things aren't happening. And our schedules are flexible as such where there's appointments with school counselors that just don't get seen those days. So uh, I think our, our main focus in the schools, and I can speak for our group who are all here with me, is we really pride on ourselves on those relationships.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to take a, just a moment before we go to a few more board members to, um, you know, I'm a recapper and summarizer um, about what we've heard. And so we've gotten a presentation from our officers about what they do in our schools um, and some, um, specific anecdotes about relationships that they have built. I feel a lot of the things that we've talked about, um, we continue to use the word building relationships, building trust, um, kind of a, some more, what I would consider some one-on-one relationship building. Um, talking about the duties and what's going on during distance learning and, um, if you're, uh, if you've got full schedule during distance learning days and how that's working. Um, I feel like some of the things that we've talked about, you've shared, um, are not necessarily unique to being an officer, but, um, some, but being an officer in those situations may be of benefit. And then, um, we did talk about, um, specifically the law enforcement, uh, pieces of the diversion program, um, other things that might go beyond, uh, what a typical person, uh, teacher, staff, para, what, what have you would know about in the, in the legal system. So, um, if I may, um, we've also touched a little bit on training. Um, if I may, I'd like to sort of keep, um, keep our questions, uh, going around, um, and geared towards our, um, officers who are here with us. And then as those wrap up, maybe we can hear from our principals. Um, I know we're going to still talk about data. Um, but I'm just trying to, you know, I like to summarize and we've been here, um, we've been here about an hour and a half. So, um, I'm going to go back to my list of, uh, raised hands and I'm going to go uh, from what I have seen, Director Nathan, Director Marvin, Director Schluesner. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I don't know if this is better, um, to be addressed when the principals, uh, if, if the principals have something planned or if they're just asking questions, but um, how do, we've had a few questions already about the role of the SROs versus the role of some of our um, student support staff, like social workers, mental health counselors, et cetera. How do the SROs work with that staff inside the school? Um, one of the officers just said that there are some students who don't necessarily look to that staff as their resource and they look to SROs instead. But I'd like to hear a little bit more about how SROs are integrated into the building teams that are already there to, uh, provide student supports in counseling, mental health, social work, et cetera.
I can speak to that. Uh, this is Chris Fogarty, Principal at Century High School. I've worked with many, uh, liaisons over the years and actually Dan Palford was one of the first ones in the district when I was at Mayo High School, then to my time at Willow Creek. I worked with Bruce Langworthy, then to John Marshall with Officer Blanick, and then for the vast majority of my time, Officer Blair, now Officer Clayman. Uh, they are a significant part of what we do as far as operations, standard operating procedures, just safe and welcoming environment. Um, making sure that the expectation that we have a safe school, um, is key. That, that visibility, awareness, relationships. Uh, the, the role of a social worker within the Rochester Public Schools, the role of a mental health practitioner is specifically tied to two things. One, the teacher contract. And then also our students that are on IEPs. They're, um, and they're busy. They're busy, uh, dealing with caseloads, um, uh, how they're servicing on IEP, uh, what that may look like. Now, one of the things that, um, and I believe the, the officers are being very humble with what they do for the work. Um, they're a significant partner, um, in the way, in the skills they have as far as de-escalating student behaviors and bringing families in. I know some of the things that I've seen arise in are, uh, harassment orders, restraining orders. And then the, the guidance that the, the law enforcement officers are able to provide are, uh, our students and families. And a few things over time too, um, as I've gotten to hire, uh, the last, uh, well, Officer Clayman, um, and then Officer Valera, um, was hired by, uh, when Sergeant Umpierre was, I think, the lead. Not every cop is made to be an SRO. And I think we need to make that clear. So when we choose these people, these are officers that want to be working with kids. Officer Valera, and I know Officer Block did a ton of pals. The work that Officer Clayman has been doing with, uh, Shop With A Cop, being at our dances, being at our football games, uh, being a part of the community. You know, and as I saw some police reform down in, uh, Chicago that I watched on NBC Nightly News where the new officers were being in their academy, were being, um, toured around, uh, communities by high school students, by teenagers to build that positive relationship. So if we're truly wanting to do community policing, which it seems to be the sense of where we need to go, um, and I'll quote Paul Gustafson, those of us that have been in the district for a while, Paul Gustafson was a numbers guy if there ever was a numbers guy. And he said, this is a social science. And you can't measure all the stuff we do with numbers. This is us, we're social beings and most of the things we do, I can't give you the quantitative data. Now, we'll look at some data points I hear, I would imagine here soon. But in regards to that team, that flow of how we do things, uh, Officer Clayman comes to our administrative meetings for the portions that it's appropriate for her to be there. Uh, we usually meet on Mondays and Thursdays. Um, what's the vibe going down, uh, from the weekend? What are we looking at as far as, um, some of the social media things that are going on and how we can try to put out these fires, uh, to mitigate? A lot of the work that we do is mitigate de-escalation. Um, looking at, uh, me being a CPI trainer for my building and being a CPI trainer for the last, uh, twelve years, a lot of our language is really close, like closely related when we're working with the officers about rational detachment, de-escalation behaviors, um, precipitating factors, all led to the behaviors that are going on here. And what we can do to get that student back centered and then the follow-up, um, is key. So it, 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 it's a partnership. It's a true partnership on what the day is needing. I know, um, some of my staff was busy today with, uh, some matters of student protection, um, maltreatment things that, that take place. Um, and having that officer there that can lend that support right away. Um, and the reality is, um, one of the scary things that still happen is school shootings. We still have those. I remember when, uh, Sandy, Sandy Hook took place. We all do. I remember Columbine. I remember where I was on all these pieces where I've been a school administrator. And there are still bad people that want to do bad things to our young people, which is horrible. And knowing that I have a police car right out front that could, um, div- divert, mitigate any of those things from happening, I, I think it's just the best thing we have going for you is a true, real partnership. So kids can see firsthand and families can see firsthand, wow, this is how policing should be done in a partnership with the school. Um, and we've had excellent officers all the way through, in my experience.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Fogarty. Um, you used a, um, you used a term, um, and I forgot it, it went back. C, DPI, CPI, something, something, something. Is it, it was about de-escalation, I believe. Crisis something? Can you, um?
Yeah, I'll explain. So Rob Scripture and I are trainers. I don't know if anyone else is here, but that's all about Crisis Prevention Institute. Um, I got trained in that, uh, years ago when I was an administrator at Willow Creek because we were dealing with so many escalated behaviors. I needed to find out what I was doing. I needed to find out what I was doing. Was I being a, was I precipitating factor for these kids as to why they were escalating? And John Norlander was our trainer at the time at the old Baroque School, and I fell in love with CPI. Worked with Corey McIntyre way back when, when he was the Director of Special Ed to get some advanced training. At the time, there was only three of us in the district. Now each building has a person. And to partner with some of those pieces on training your staff. Now, if you talk to the general public with the CPI, they may think it's about holds. Well, it's about safe holds and restraints that we have to use, and it's care, welfare, safety, and security. And we preach that in our trainings. That's the mantra of that. And I see that also with our liaison officers on how they are able to. They have a skill set. You fall back on your training. Not every person in the school has the level of training that they have in composure when things are heated as well as you have a liaison. I know when I'm going into a tough situation, knowing that I can rely on my police liaison to be there because sometimes things do get tough in a school, then I have them with their training and how they can follow through on it is a very high level of training compared to what your normal educator gets. So we're speaking the same language, we're walking the same walk, knowing that we're going to be the compassionate authority, the compassionate, empathetic authority to de-escalate that student. And above all, boy, we're going to keep their dignity and integrity intact because that matters to the kid when they come back because they're coming back to us, and we're going to love them. Sometimes we have to give them some tough love on what they're doing if they're acting, if they're acting out with egregious acts. Those have to be handled. And they need to be handled swiftly because on the other side of them, we also have victims that are wondering what we're doing to keep our school safe. So it's a balancing act. We want kids in school every single day. We want to help them figure out, you know, they're impulsive, their prefrontal cortex is still forming. There's enough brain science out there. And whatever we can do to provide positive key role models that want to be with our young people. I mean, I've said to folks before, I remember Sergeant Berry years ago, we were leaving a football game, and we had a cop that was on duty there that was not good. And I asked Sergeant Berry, I said, "I respectfully ask that that police officer is never supervising any of my kids" because I got so used to how well my liaisons worked with kids that it was a night and day difference. So knowing that if I do have to call 911, I may not know who I get off the street if my liaison's not there to help me de-escalate it. I don't know what their rapport is with kids. I don't know what they had. So there's so many of those layers of this relationship that has so many more positives than negatives. And if we have to, and I think Captain Stillwell said it, if there's some things we need to do as far as public perception, I think it's a great partnership to do that and be a model for other agencies, other law enforcement agencies and school districts. Like this is how we partner to take care of our young folks.
Thank you, Mr. Fogarty. I appreciate that. Director Marvin?
Yeah, thank you. We've heard from students, especially from our students of color, that either because of their own trauma that they've had experience with or because of messages they're getting from the media, that when they see a police officer in school, they relive that trauma. They're afraid. It paralyzes them sometimes in their ability to do school. Now, we don't know how many that is in each building, but I do believe that we have kids who have this attitude that it's just a matter of time before the police are going to come to get them. And I'm not sure who this question is for, but what's the plan to change that, not just that attitude, but to ensure that that reality is not the reality in Rochester?
Jeff Stillwell, I'll just weigh in briefly, or go ahead, Chief.
Yeah, I can weigh in on that. I think what you're bringing up is a significant challenge for law enforcement. And if you think about our profession as a whole and how we operate, most of the time, the only time we have contact with the public is either in times of crisis or in times of enforcement. And recognizing that, the 2015 President Obama's 21st Century Policing Task Force, one of the key pillars and the core pillars within that document that we do use as our guiding principles for this law enforcement agency is you've got to engage the public, specifically the youth, in times of non-crisis, non-enforcement activities. And I think that's why it's so reinforcing to me of why this School Resource Officer Program is so important because we have a heightened level of training and investment in our school resource officers. We can collectively come together and identify those kids that have experienced that trauma and then start to tear down and break down some of those barriers there. That, to me, is a source of strength for this program. And it's a source of opportunity as well that we have directly on-site. And so when we talk about strategies, or you're asking about strategy, we've spent a significant amount of energy within this organization, specifically within the last two years, of engaging the public at the highest possible level. And the youth are such an important part of that engagement. And so recognizing that, I think, again, a source of strength for this program is we can leverage these school resource officers in these programs to tear those barriers down. And if we don't do it now, if we don't do it in the schools, we're going to have more problems in a couple of years with them out on the streets. And so we have to do it now. It's imperative. And we're open to furthering those relationships and those contacts and coming alongside the principals and the social workers within the school to help identify that marginalized population, if you will.
Thank you, Chief. Director Schluesner?
Building a little bit off of Melissa's question, as we've heard from our community members that, you know, perhaps the money could be better spent just in other ways. And as we as a board have recently had to do, you know, for operational costs, you know, we've closed a school that was very much successful and loved. So I guess the question for you, probably Chief Franklin, is, okay, the school district is paying out a fair amount of money to help support this program. How important is the money to you? You know, we're coming up to a budget cycle where we're going to have to start making some hard decisions, and everything will be on the table. It's harder to cut something now when it's, well, not costing much. So I guess I'd appreciate your thoughts on the need for the funds.
Well, budget challenges, I can sympathize. We're going through that, those exercises at a city level as well with the zero levy increase in 2021 here. How important is the money to the police department? It's extremely important for us to make it operationally, to be able to do it, I should say. Without the funding, specifically now, we would have difficulty in staffing these positions. I think, though, that the value here added goes way deeper in the fact that at some point, even if SROs were eliminated, at some point, police services will be needed in the schools. And as I look at a police services delivery model, it's my job to set the cops up for success, give them the best possible training, train them, write good policies, give them good supervision, and set them up for success. I believe that if the program were eliminated, I believe we're setting ourselves up for failure in the fact that you're going to get a lesser-trained officer. I really appreciated what one of the principals said when they talked about, you know, not everyone is cut out to be a school resource officer. That is 100% true statement. And I can speak to the level of passion that our current SROs have, and it's second to none. These officers have a heart and a passion for youth. And I don't think you can put a price tag on that from a policing services delivery model and the fact that they understand the school, they understand youth challenges. As a father myself, and just getting into teenage daughter era, I'm learning some of those unique challenges as well. And so a lot of our school resource officers are parents themselves and can understand those challenges versus a 23-year-old sector car officer that really doesn't know, doesn't understand. And so the true value added here is really in the training and the hearts of the cops and the hearts of the SROs that are selected to do that job.
And don't get me wrong, I do see those values as well. I just know from a school district point of view, we don't have the luxury the city has in setting our own levy amounts and our budgets are a lot more controlled than the city's is. If the city needs money, they have the authority to raise the taxes. The school district does not. So when we have to make hard decisions, they're certainly much harder than the position the city is in, which is why I need to ask the budgetary question. So appreciate your thoughts.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a little update. Superintendent Munoz is having some technical difficulties, so he just popped in. They're working on things. As you saw, we could see him, he could hear and see us, but we could not hear him. So he is working on that. And I have a couple notes from him to make sure we get to things, other things. Director Nathan?
So building a little bit on, I think it was Director Marvin's comments and Director Barlow's comments. We were provided some information from the Minnesota Student Survey that talked about how students feel about the SROs in the schools. And yes, a majority of the students of all races and ethnic groups had positive ratings. But when I look at the data for some of our racial and ethnic groups, there's a consistent percentage of the eighth graders and the ninth graders and the 11th graders, between about 15 and 20%, who rated strongly disagree that they would tell an SRO about a problem that they were having and that they feel comfortable with the SROs in the buildings and that they would want to have SROs in the schools. And I looked to the numbers because I wanted to match some sense of the size of the population of our students who are particularly impacted by the presence of the SROs. In addition to the anecdotal testimonies of the students we've talked to or we've been on forums with, and I know that you've heard them too. So I'm wondering if you know of any model programs or if you have any internal plans to specifically reach out to those hard-to-reach students who frankly may not want to have anything to do with you. But I really think that that perception in the survey and the perceptions that they hear, I don't know how we're going to get to it by just the ongoing interactions, you know, one-on-one in the buildings, especially if they're avoiding you and they don't want to have the interaction. And the simple interaction of having a conversation about wanting to have a better relationship could re-trigger the trauma. So I'm wondering if there's anybody from the district who has any thoughts or anybody from the RPD has any thoughts as to how we can really directly address that.
Well, I'll go first. Again, Jeff Stillwell, Captain Community Services. We are building a program right now that we hope to launch in the next month. It's really all the reasons we're doing it. It was triggered by the George Floyd event in which we do some listening, we build trusting relationships, and we go in, and again, it's going to be, it's going to start with the African-American community because that's where our partners work. And again, they are telling us that there's people, or there's kids, obviously, that when they go home, or maybe they, when they were younger, they were raised with a culture of you do not talk to the police, period. That community is hurting right now for a variety of reasons, including, you know, all these traumatic events caused by police around the country. But also, the community has lost, you know, mothers, children to violence that has not by people in the community. Together, we believe that, and it won't be the school resource officer's job to do this alone. Our whole team is working on this, that we need to get out there, we need to have relationships with the parents, the siblings that aren't in school, anybody that will meet with us, tell us their story. We're willing to listen. So again, I think the SRO program is a model for us, but it's just one piece of a bigger picture that we are doing with other team members within community services. So I believe in our friends in the community, and we're talking grassroots organizations, that many of which, I'm working hand-in-hand with a friend of mine that, you know, 15 years ago I arrested for a pretty serious crime. We need to do better. We, you know, we need to reach these people that are, that are this community that is hurting and build relationships. And again, what they're telling us is some of the messaging the kids are getting in the schools is overridden. They're willing to walk hand-in-hand with us, which is why we signed on and will help finance this to, again, change the dialogue, change this culture of, you know, the police are the enemy and you can't tell. I look at those survey results and, you know, I see opportunities there. You know, I don't think all of them are caused by individual individuals that have suffered police or trauma at the hands of the police. I think, again, they grew up in areas sometimes that the police were not trusted, that they didn't see solve their crimes or help their problems. But we're committed to all that, you know. And again, I think it filters into the schools. The schools is an area where we've done better than the community at large, I guess is the best way to put it. And it is because those officers are in one site. They meet everybody. So again, I think there's much work to do. I think we've talked a lot tonight about us sort of teaching students. I always ask, what could these students teach us if we would just listen a little bit more? We have met, myself and the mayor, with the group from Mayo and are committed, committed to do a better job of listening to them. And we believe we will bring them along as partners. Somebody mentioned the program in Chicago where the kids are given the tours. I mean, that's like, that's really good stuff there, but they're willing to work with us, right, the RCI group? They're willing to be part of the change we all want to see. So all those things, I think, are areas for opportunities, areas that we will build relationships in. And I, you know, people call me the optimist. I've been here the longest out of anybody on this call at the Rochester Police Department, I'm saying. But I am optimistic because we've, I've met one-on-one with those kids. I've met one-on-one. We meet one-on-one every, you know, all the time with people re-entering from prison and building those relationships. You know, tell us how we could have kept you from getting to where you were. Again, we're an agency that values constant improvement, as I'm sure the school district did, and your all commitment is to that also. So with that, I'll stop.
Thank you so much. I see, I saw Superintendent's picture. Superintendent, do you want to see if you have any any volume control?
Well, I just, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, I can hear you.
Awesome. Well, I'm back.
Welcome.
I probably missed a lot of the conversation, but I will add, maybe this has already been said. You know, I don't think anybody in this meeting will disagree that we may have some students that due to some form of trauma that may not even occurred in our school buildings that are traumatized when they see a uniform. And I think what better way to help a student overcome that is to build a positive, show a positive side of that uniform by building that relationship with the student in the school buildings. And I do want to comment, too, there was a question about what can SROs offer that a social worker or counselor can. And that's a good argument, but I think there are going to be times when we do need a law enforcement. And I'm not going to identify the school or the SRO, but I'm aware of a situation where this particular SRO had a good relationship with the student and the family. And the student was out of control in the school and really wanted to... in the school and really wanted to take on and beat up the administration and the SRO. Unfortunately, the young man had to be taken out of the building in handcuffs. But the SRO was able to de-escalate the young man outside the school, sent the young man home, and he called the parent of this child to let them know that he had just sent him home, and this is what had happened. Hadn't we not had an SRO and had to call a patrol officer, I almost believe what would have happened is he would have been taken down and to the police station and charged. Just because the SRO had that relationship and knew the student, that kept that student from being charged. And that's just an example. And, you know, there are times when we are going to need law enforcement in our schools. And I would prefer to have them that handled by an officer that's been in the school, knows students, knows our system, handling those type of situations than an officer from the street patrol.
Thank you, Superintendent. Director Barlow, I was, I'm going to give you the floor, but I will say Superintendent Munoz did say that your questions did go to the officers, and we are going to assure that they all get answered, the questions that you emailed earlier. So if you, if that's what you were going to bring up, some of those questions, know that they have been, they're ready for them.
Okay, and no. But both Chief Franklin and Captain Stillwell have made reference to community policing, which is very important, and the Obama Initiative, 21st Century Policing, very important. I'm glad to hear that. And I think it's also important that, not necessarily from a police point of view, but even from a district point of view, or for those who are perhaps viewing this evening, it's not a question of, we may have students, we do have students who feel a certain way. Again, it's not to blame them as to, well, why do they feel that way? I'm not saying, I've heard anyone blame anyone regarding that, but I believe it's important to minimally change our language from "may have" to "we do have." And to understand also that relationship building, I was excited to hear Captain Stillwell make reference to this new initiative that will be, could make, being kicked off in a month or so. And I look forward to being a part of that, you know, and being a leader of, well, African-American community. And community engagement, though I want to also say this, the police, Rochester Police should not feel that they should have to do this by themselves. The district, the school board has what's called a community engagement committee, okay? The district has family engagement. I mean, some work has already occurred, and some relationships are already in existence. And maybe this broader discussion this evening can lead itself in a direction of where, well, let's talk beyond, if you will, the language of referral and outcome, let's talk about how we're really going to provide and develop an educational environment that is welcomed by each student, and that we together are able to do what is best for all students. So I just wanted to put that in the plate at this point.
Thank you, Director Barlow. Yes, and added to that list, we also have the student school board, which Director Marvin and I are serving on this year. And so they are conduit to students across the district. And so this might be a good topic of conversation with them as well. I don't see any current board members with their hand up. So is there, we know I have a, we know we have some guests here who haven't had a chance to speak. I'm looking at you, some of your other principals, and whoever else. I can go back to you, Superintendent, or move on as you see fit at the moment.
Yeah, thank you. Before we have the principals kind of talk about their experience, could we have somebody from RPD respond to some of the questions that were submitted to you? We did not provide those answers, because we informed the board that you would be able to have those answers tonight. So if somebody could respond to those questions before we move on to the principals?
I think, this is Captain Stillwell again, I have the questions and the written responses we provided. I think we've kind of covered the uniform issue. Again, it's not something, we want them to be in the uniform, that they're, or the lack of the uniform they're most, they're most approachable in, and they'll have the most success, knowing that currently they're wearing uniforms for some, some of those reasons we talked about. I mentioned briefly, no uses of force in 2020. I mean, let's face it, you know, except for the first couple of months, a lot of that's been distance learning, so I'm not really patting ourselves on the back for that. But in all of 19, I think we found two. And again, these, these SROs are out, you know, in COVID and non-school, when school is not in session, handling police calls. And they're not using force on those either, because again, they have, they have a skill set that uniquely prepares them to de-escalate, along with direction from the chief and myself, that there is no time limit on de-escalation. Anytime we have to put our hands on anybody, that's a failure, and we're going to have to talk about it. So we have done better than other places in that regard. Not so much maybe when we have sent, I remember as a street boss several years ago, an incident at Phoenix where we had to send us just the sector car, and I think a phasing erupted from that. But that has to be at least three years ago. And again, I think that's, that's the quality of this team. We talked sort of about the model program, so I'm not going to go into that. Again, the, do SROs carry handguns on their personnel at all times? Yes, they do. Our policy requires, if you're working, that you have a handgun. Obviously, you know, we haven't focused our presentation on school safety. I think Mr. Fogarty brought it up. You know, we hear a lot of rhetoric about, you know, SRO has never intervened in a school shooting, but that doesn't mean they haven't prevented hundreds of them. And again, those are things you just don't know. Again, I think we need a deeper dive in making sure us and the district that our numbers, we're talking about the same thing, what's a case referral? A lot of times, a case referral doesn't generate a police report. Again, our goal is to keep people out of the system, and their names out of police reports, and all those things, because even if they're not charged, obviously, that creates data that, that at some point someone could use to make a decision about their future. And so I think we can do better there in tracking, you know, what a case means. Again, some of the arrests in schools are for apprehension orders. We've really worked with probation to ask the serious question, you know, why are we going to arrest a student for a technical probation violation? That's in-school and learning. That makes like absolutely no sense, right? And probation's a good partner in agreeing with that. I think it's sometimes the bureaucracy, I can't get the kid to come in and see me, so I'm going to issue an app order and call the SRO. So again, some of those arrest numbers might be one individual that commits a serious assault, something that there's really not a lot of discretion on, at least at the frontline level, someone seriously injured. And then the probation officer issues an app order that might count as two arrests. We're committed to doing a better job with numbers and stats, and making sure that our language matches. Let's see, we've talked a little bit about the contract, and we handle most of those goal setting at the, at the site level, the principal and the SRO in the site. I think there's a discussion to be had there with, you know, Scott and the team, about whether we should be having like more district-wide goals, you know, that sort of applied at all schools. And again, in reduction in referrals, reduction in, you know, tickets, whatever it might be. I think there's a discussion to be had there. And I think it would be, it would be, it would be, you know, positive for us all to sort of go through that exercise every year that we're working together. You know, I think there's a question here that we didn't answer in the, because it's so complex, about what happens if there's fights in schools and we're not there. Again, I think I mentioned briefly, one of the things that, you know, we try to do is be a good partner with the site principals and staff in saying, in explaining, yes, we were there, and we don't believe criminal charges were the right thing. I think we add another level to that, being that I think a lot of parents might think that, you know, we're the ultimate authority on the justice system, which, you know, we may or may not be. But again, you can mitigate a lot of things that happen in a school setting. I mean, the principals do a great job, and the staff's there. But when those kids go home, if mom or dad calls and demands we do something, we always tell them they have to wait for the SRO, because again, we want to make sure they get a fully informed story, not the night shift patrol officer that just started, you know, at 7:00 tonight, and all he knows is he's got to write this report so he can get on to the next one. And that's, that's not to minimize what the street patrol does, but again, they don't have the time to dig into the fine details. So all of those will result in a, in a, in a report, and we will probably be trying to get, if we're going to intervene in hindsight, it's probably going to be trying to get tickets dismissed, or directed diversion, and those types of things. So I think that's all of them. I would just like to add, you know, one thing, you know, we would certainly encourage any of you on the board to come and spend a couple hours in any of the sites with our staff. Again, I think you would see what we're trying to tell you, you know, about the interactions. We're committed to doing better. Again, you know, I think we all are, we all know that, that there's room for improvement in every aspect of a system that hasn't always provided equitable outcomes. And I think that's it. I am arranging, I approved today for a fourth grade teacher to try to do a virtual class inside a squad car. I think that's going to be super interesting for fourth graders at Gage. I'm not exactly sure how we're going to pull it off, but he seemed to have the energy and the will. And so I said I'd partner him up with somebody that had equal energy and will, and they'd try to, try to create an exciting, you know, livestreamed program there. So I think that's all I have.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Director Amundson.
Thanks. I had a clarifying question about the last bunch of things that was covered. And it's about the handguns. I heard him say, the policy says, I think I heard him say, the policy says the officers have to have it on them at all times? That's not a public school policy, just to make clear.
No, no.
Who is the governing body who approves that policy? Is that city council, or a police oversight, or what would that be?
Well, it would be, I think it would be the chief, really. Again, and I'm in full disclosure here, you know, we're not going to send police officers out into the community without handguns. You know, it's just not a model that, that works. The unions would have something to say about it. We have, I think the chief said it best, we have a duty to prepare our, all of our officers for success and to be able to protect themselves. To us, the tools we use are much like tools other industries use to ensure their safety. Again, I think it's, you know, these officers don't just get, they drive to the school, they often get flagged down on the way, they often handle calls on the way home from school. So again, I think it's, and I just want to be totally honest here, that we can't deploy police officers without handguns in Rochester, or in the United States in general at this point in time. Someday, maybe. But the proliferation of guns and gun violence is not immune from schools. And so we feel we have to adequately protect the staff.
I understand that. Would there be room for some sort of compromise, like a lockbox in the office, so that the officer, while they're in the building, isn't carrying it around the students?
I can answer that, Chief Franklin, here. Unfortunately, you know, again, we need to be prepared for absolutely everything. And so no, there would not be room for that to occur. It's part of our profession, it's part of our operational environment, and it's, it is one of those tools that is required to be on hand at all times.
Thank you, Chief Franklin, for your honesty. Director Barlow?
Yes, thank you. And as Captain Stillwell mentioned, the duty responsibility to ensure that officers are trained for success, I believe it's also the duty responsibility of school board to ensure that students are educated for success, and are able to be, able to feel safe in a high-quality learning environment. I'm excited about the potential opportunities that are before us. I would suggest that community leaders be given the opportunity to maybe speak with or meet with SROs, as Captain Stillwell, you invited the board for that purpose. I think it might be of value as well, because sometimes leaders may, you know, follow and be responsive to the concerns that are presented to them, as I try to be. And for those who may be listening, though, and who are convinced that having Rose by any other name is still a rose, so having police in our schools is not a good idea. Is there one thing you could offer? Now, I asked that in light of, and I alluded to this earlier, the overwhelming majority of the referrals at the Rochester Public School made to law enforcement were drug, alcohol, paraphernalia, tobacco, okay? And I guess I'm just trying to, you know, appreciate those referrals in light of the duties and relationships that you had referenced earlier. I guess I'm thinking more so out loud, because I'm thinking for what our predominant referrals are, there's not necessarily a, what's the return, what's the, you know, rate of return we're getting in terms of, well, it's these are the things that are of concern to us, and this is why we're contacting RPD. You know, we have X amount of students that are firing up, they're in the bathrooms, they're caught with this, they're drinking that, they have this on their person. Is that the best use of your time?
Well, I think that's, it's a great question. And I think, and I think the admin team can talk about how they run their schools to reinforce rules. And again, I think referrals to us for those things, I don't think those are resulting in, in a whole lot of criminal cases. Again, I don't know who else, you know, if there's a better way to handle it, I would agree with you. I would agree with you. It's not the greatest use of our time. But again, I think we, we're not teachers, but there are teachable moments that I think we can provide insight into. And, and again, I totally agree with you. It's worth the dialogue. If we're, you know, I think, and again, we're partners in this, but, you know, when referrals are someone called us, right? We get them, the patrol gets them all night long. We don't really have a choice to just to say no. I think we have to, particularly in the school environment, we have to, we have to work with our partners to ask those questions. And what are the outcomes? And what goal, you know, again, enforcing rules on, on kids that, that don't result in criminal penalties, that's my preference, as both a parent and, and a police officer. But it's a fair point that we should really be looking at how we're, how we're, where we're intervening. But again, I think, I think those stats would show those things are, a lot of the referrals that didn't result in police reports are all those things you just said. Because again, I think it's, who does, who just, we have a process by which we can destroy a pack of cigarettes or, you know, whatever it might be through our evidence system that, that maybe the school doesn't. So, I look at us being a partner in that more than these are kids, we're writing a police report every time we catch a kid smoking or vaping. We're trying to get rid of the paraphernalia in a way that, 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 you know, if a parent were to come and say, where's my son's, you know, vaping pipe or something, we have processes by which to deal with that.
And so then, as a follow-up to that, how can you ensure then that there is consistent, that there's a consistent practice of fairness, if you will? If some communities and/or students feel that, yeah, I'm being given a citation, whereas Billy is just, oh, they just tear the stuff, pat him on his back and say, don't do it again. But, you know, I'm really raked over the cold. So, can you speak to that briefly, please? I guess the consistency of practice, how do you ensure that all, now, each student is different, I get that. But can you, do you sense what I'm getting at as well, though? If I can attempt to go about it.
No, I understand what you're trying to say. And again, without having a deep dive into each individual referral and report, I think the way we do it is by we, we talk about these things. We come into this scenario and all five of the school resource officers sit and listen. We acknowledge that certain communities haven't always been treated as, you know, equitably and that it's our goal to make sure that happens. And we can have supervisor oversight on anything that results in a police report, which we do now. And if we see, if we, if we see those things, we can, we can immediately address them. Will some, you know, obviously for, for your fellow board members, Mr. Barlow, you probably sat on a promotional board or two on your civil service days and you might be responsible for forcing them to listen to me for almost an hour here. So, so I appreciate your perspective. I know those are issues. We're committed to dealing with them. And again, I hand out my business card to anybody that wants it, that has my cell phone number on it. And I tell them, if you're not treated right, if you feel it's unfair, call me. We'll, we'll dig into it. We'll, we'll ask the why. You know, we often don't take the time as police to explain the why. And I think when we do, we do a lot better with youth and adults.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Barlow, for your question. I think, you know, what you're really getting at is how do we ensure there's not racial bias in referrals? And it sounds like there is not only work to do there as we do in the school system with our discipline disparities, but there's also opportunity to look at things and be better. And so, I appreciate that. I just want to check in with Superintendent. I have another board member question. And I also see we have another principal who's raised his hand. Is there any direction you'd like me to take in particular as we're now about two-plus hours into our meeting? I just want to make sure we're being respectful of everybody's time, but getting through all the material that we need to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the principals do have an opportunity to share their input. So, I guess it's up to you when you want that to happen.
Okay. Director Nathan, can I ask you, is your question directed towards duty dating or is it something that we can save for a little bit later? Or is it really pertinent right now? And I leave that up to you.
I will, I will ask the superintendent if it might be covered and what the principals are going to talk about or not. But we've been talking a lot about the SROs and the charging and the, you know, how a case sort of gets into the, into legal system. And I want to know a little bit more about how a student gets to needing to be referred to an SRO in the, in the building. So, how they, how they even encounter a law enforcement officer. So, that might be something that administration can tell us when the principals talk. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Priggy, would you like to introduce yourself and let us know your thoughts?
Yeah, sure will. Troy Priggy. I'm the principal at Mayo High School. So, I'm sitting here listening the last two hours and 18 minutes or so. I have a lot of thoughts going through my mind. And, you know, I've worked with over 20 SROs in my career as a teacher administrator. And not one time have I ever worked with somebody who's looking to jam up a student with, with anything, with a citation, with, it's more about that building that relationship and, and educating. And I could speak a little bit to, you know, when we have a student that, that, you know, fractures a law, breaks a law, you know, it's more about referring that to the police, to Officer Kelly or whoever the SRO is, and letting them know that it happened. And then they can go into their part of it. So, we do things separately. You know, we have the school piece and then there's SRO piece. And, and all the SROs I've ever worked with have done an awesome job of educating, you know, that student, that family about what could happen. And, you know, we're not looking to, again, jam up the kid or the family with any, any sort of extra consequence for anything. You know, I'm going to go back to what Captain Stillwell was saying about, you know, coming into the building. I wish we were in session right now and you could come out and, and see Officer Kelly violate all the social distancing rules that are out there right now with the hugs, the high fives, the, you know, the wrestling around. And, and yeah, I do, I do understand, you know, part of our site plan is, is student voice. And Mayo High School has an amazing group of, of students that are, that are doing good. And we want to walk side by side with those students and we're listening to them. And, and we want Officer Kelly to be in our classrooms, you know, working with, with our teachers and kids on a regular basis and more so than what they're doing. That's what, that's what our kids are telling us that they need to build that trust. You know, with all the trauma that has happened and is going on out in our communities right now, I mean, I could give you a list of a number of families that had negative experiences within schools, too, with administration and with teachers. And they don't want to talk to us and they do go to our SROs, you know, to feel, to let them know, you know, what's going on. So, I get it. I totally understand what's happening. But the relationships that every SRO has built with families and deescalated, has deescalated situations where, you know, I'm not sure what, what we would have done without that other than, you know, having to make that 911 call to help, you know, help us through some of those situations. So, I appreciated every second that I've worked with our SROs. I want to, you know, I can't plug this enough. I, our job, we work side by side, hand in hand, in a lot of issues, you know, over the summer, you know, something that our social workers couldn't do, back to that, that question. You know, they're building relationships and continuing to build those with our, with our students and families over the summer. They know what's going on, you know, because things that happen across town affect our kids. Things that happen, you know, in Minneapolis or St. Paul, they affect our kids. And there, we have to build trust. And when we come back into session again, I see our SROs being an integral part of building that trust and, and working together to make our schools the best place they possibly can be. I don't know. I'll, I'll mute myself and listen. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Priggy. It's nice to have you here. Mr. Andrew, I don't know, I don't want to say your name.
It's, it's Capel. I'm the, Andrew Capel, principal at Willow Creek Middle School. And I think I'm the only middle school rep on tonight. So, I'll speak waggly, but specifically for Willow. In our experience with our SROs, as we've been listening to the conversation tonight, just a couple notes and a couple different stories that have come up from the middle school lens. Our students are a little more, less, less mobile and have their own means of transportation. So, I know we see some different issues than the high schools do at the middle school. And the, the relationship piece that has been talked about tonight is so important. We've seen our students on days that we share with John Adams as a SRO travels between two buildings. Our students ask on the days that Officer Arzal was not here, where is he? Where is he? Because he does such a fantastic job creating the relationships with our kids, whether it's in the mornings, in the hallway during passing time, at our lunch, just having conversations. And a couple of those conversations that have come up, and I know there was a conversation around carrying the handguns tonight. I remember a conversation where a student approached Officer Arzal and said, why do you carry a handgun? And instead of a moment of angst or a moment of concern, it was an opportunity to educate. And I think that's the biggest piece that I see in that relationship with our SROs in our building is they use that opportunity to educate our students, whether it be around the gear they're wearing or a situation they're encountering. And I'll speak specifically for this last year, a lot of what we saw was trying to navigate different online environment issues. And our SROs have a different lens that they can look through. And as we use our team partnership with our social workers or counselors or administration, our SRO plays an important role in, in educating. So, that's a big piece that, that we see at the middle school as well, as well as some of those other issues around tobacco and some drug and alcohol-related pieces, too. But I'd say we see those at a lesser level. But it's really that, that extra component and that, that lens that we utilize and our kids utilize. And oftentimes, coming to the office to seek out our SRO just to have a conversation. There's, there's probably a lot more what ifs at the middle school level. What if this happened or what if that happened that we see. But I, I think it's, it's really been pretty amazing to see that relationship and the openness that our students will, will approach the officers and have. One last story is my first year last year at Willow Creek Middle School, we had a situation where there was a heightened situation and we called on an SRO. And due to a previous relationship where I was still building relationship with the student, our SRO was able to come in and the de-escalation happened right away. So, I'll share more if there's more questions at points, but wanted just to give that perspective.
Thank you so much. I see Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary, Ms. Jackie Peterson. That's her hand raised.
Good evening, board members. As long as my colleagues have dated themselves, some of them, I will date myself as well. I don't know how much I've talked about, but about over 15 years ago, I was in Chris Lingan's role in, in this very same office that I'm currently working in. And there wasn't a Scott Sheridan in the district then. Scott was maybe, he wasn't an SRO back then, but he was still on the force. And the relationship we shared back then was so valuable because, as you know, Scott really helps guide us through a number of crisis situations. And, and his, his support in the district is so valuable and his connection and relationship with our SROs is really a benefit. But I just think back to some of the officers that have already been named, people like Bruce Langworthy, who would connect with us when there were situations that we needed to know about. You know, if there was a tragedy and with one of our students over the weekend, we would be able to be prepared for school the following week and make sure that we could support our students. So, I can't say enough about that positive relationship that exists now because of Scott. I think we, we really have an incredible support with Scott, but we just couldn't serve our students as well as we, as we do without our SROs. And I just wanted to, to say thank you to them.
Thank you. We do definitely have a unique relationship with Mr. Sheridan in our cabinet. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Good evening. Eric Johnson, again, Principal John Marshall High School. I wanted to speak to something that Sergeant Lowry touched on much earlier in the meeting this evening. He spoke about the mission of the SROs in Rochester to keep students out of the juvenile justice system. And I wanted to speak to that because I joined Rochester Public Schools in 2015. Prior to that, I was an administrator in another district in Wisconsin for 14 years and had an opportunity to work with the SROs in that district. And they were, it was a fantastic group of people. But I can tell you that when I came to Rochester, the difference going from a very reactive stance to a proactive, positive policing outlook was very, very noticeable. And I continue to see that daily in my work with the officers that are here tonight. Their mission is to keep students out of the juvenile justice system and they are continually working to do that. And again, having had that perspective of another point of view where it was very different and students were ticketed and charged very frequently, it's refreshing to see it. And I'm encouraged by what we've been talking about tonight. I've appreciated the ongoing dialogue that I've had with these officers and with Sergeant Lowry and the opportunity to have feedback of how things are going. And I can attest to the fact that they are very open to that feedback and very much attuned to adjusting procedures and ideas according to what they're hearing. So, I appreciate the conversation that we've had ongoing as long as I've been here, but again, the conversation tonight as well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. It's nice to see you. Any other of our administrators or guests who'd like to share any thoughts? I won't put you on the spot, but you could raise your hand in the little, whatever where I can see, or you can just unmute and start talking. Introduce yourself. Okay. Superintendent, I'm not seeing anybody else stepping up to the mic right now. So, I don't know, let's see. Kind of going back to my summarizing, as you know I like to do. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about, summarizing about some of the opportunities I've either heard are, are happening or are possible. It sounds like there is some shared responsibility for hiring and training and also perhaps some room for more partnership in those areas as well. Uniform, basic uniform, there might be room for some discussion. However, the carrying of a gun sounds like a non-negotiable. The officers talked a lot about student engagement and I think that is something that our board is really happy to hear. We talk, we started to talk more and more about engagement and student engagement in particular. And I feel like if this program and relationship is to continue, being on the same page absolutely makes sense. I will say I, I liked hearing about the meeting the SROs are doing with administration and the goal setting. We have high expectations for our staff in terms of setting goals and looking at success and how do we know things are working. So, again, I see some opportunities for growth there as well. And then I also appreciate the discussion about working together as partners, not only between between perhaps Rochester Police Department and the school district, but we, we know the county comes into this system as well. And then our grassroots or perhaps nonprofit groups, organizations may be interested to, to work community-wide on some of these issues, or at least come to some mutual understanding. I will go back to Director Barlow's comments, and I think others as well, that, you know, there is concern, the board has heard concern about differential treatment between our minority students to our white students. And I think, you know, I can, I think that's a, a great concern in the larger sense, some specifically to our district, but I think we need to be mindful of that as well, and how, if this relationship is to continue, how we can work together to ensure that all our students are treated fairly respectfully and in those areas. Superintendent, where would you like to go next?
I don't, we pretty much are done. I think we, there is some data that was in board docs, but we need, we need to spend a little more time straightening that out. So I, at this time, we're not ready to discuss. I, it just, what's in there now is really confusing. So I think we want to take another stab at it and bring that at a later time.
Okay. And I understand some of that has to do with the reporting mechanisms and the timeframes and stuff. And so Superintendent and administration is sort of asking for a little bit of extra time to kind of get that a little bit more in a usable format for us to look at and discuss. So hopefully that will be okay with my colleagues. I think that is, you know, let's not talk about something that's hard to understand and not going to make much sense for us. Other questions, board members? We've had a very rich discussion over the last several hours. Again, I like to share appreciation for all who have entered here, 32 people on the call. I think this is the biggest meeting I have ever had, had to manage. I see, we have a few, a few hands raised, and that's great. I'm going to go to, first to Chief Franklin.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, and I appreciate kind of your recap, but I just want to recap kind of the Rochester Police Department's position here with, with certain, with commitment statements, and just so that everybody's on the same page. I mean, we are committed to relationship building. We are committed to engaging youth wherever we find them. We're committed to working collectively with administrative staff to address student trauma and reduce that harm. We're committed to reducing and addressing racial disparities and complaints of racial disparities. Bottom line, if I could leave you with kind of a closing statement, we're committed to building our program based on your expectations, goals, and comfort level.
Thank you, Chief Franklin. Okay, I have three board hands. I'm going to start with Director Barlow.
Yes, I just had a question, not to be answered tonight, but in the not-too-distant future regarding the Safe School Levy, of which in part funding for SROs is drawn from. And I see Mr. Carlson, I don't know if you want to speak to that tonight. I know we've gotten late in the meeting, so I don't really need to hear that tonight, though if you're prepared and raring to go, you know.
Sure, I can answer it quickly. So annually, we do have authority to levy for the Safe Schools Levy, and we can use that money for a variety of purposes. It could be for counselors, it could be for school resource officers, is a common thing. We also employ security paraprofessionals in our secondary buildings. So annually, that's about $710,000 of revenue, and we're using about $394,000 in the school year for the SRO program. And then we're funding almost 10 full-time, excuse me, 10 full-time equivalent para-professional positions, and a tenth of Scott Sheridan's salary. So we're using the money. Additionally, we also are paying for our custom alarm and our premier security, so they're monitoring our buildings for fire alarms and responding to any calls in the, in the evening or late hours.
Okay, thank you.
Just making sure you got it all. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, for providing that. Director Nathan, and then Director Amundson.
So one of these questions is for our police officer guests, and one is for the superintendent. I know that in the PowerPoint, and it was referred to that the, that the Police Department is working on a restorative justice program. But Superintendent, I wanted to either give you a chance tonight, or maybe at a later school board meeting, to specify what's happening with restorative justice in our schools, because that is also another comment that we heard a lot from, from our community, being offered as an alternative to SROs, or being part of the, the menu of what we have for our students. So I don't know if you want to address that tonight, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear, the difference between the two.
Yes, I would be happy to, to do that. I would say almost every time we've offered a variety of professional development opportunities, restorative practices is one of the options. And we have many staff who choose to participate in that. We have not gotten to the level where we'd say it's required that all staff get that training, but I know that is something that we've had conversations about prior to the pandemic, that, you know, we spent pretty much all back-to-school week, plus the two days, getting ready for the type of instruction that we're going to have to deliver. So we really had to change our back-to-school week PD this year. But I know we've, in the past, we've offered sessions. We do have some individuals in our system who are good trainers in that practice, and we do have some staff that use it frequently. We know we have, the LC, for example, does use it consistently in, across the building. But I would say we're not at the level where we've required and trained every employee on restorative practices.
I just have one more. So my question for our Police Department representatives, you've talked a lot about the students who are being impacted entering into the criminal justice system. Can you tell us a little bit about you do for victims of, you know, any crimes or offenses in our, in our buildings and the kinds of services you have available for them?
Yeah, just still, again, great question. Again, when we're not talking about minor status offenses, obviously the assaultive behavior and, and those things, there's victims attached to that. Again, we, we, for those that avail themselves to the services the county provides, victim services, I, I think what you'll see us doing, and the SROs doing on a, on a, I'd call it informal, might not be the right word, but just describing the system to, to somebody that might be a victim, what happens next? And particularly, sometimes it seems like maybe kids are more resilient than their parents when you, you discuss the realities of how the system moves from a victim's perspective. It's a lot different. And, and so, again, I think we work with our partners at the County Attorney's Office that, that handle both victim services and, and the prosecution piece on any cases that get to that point. But it's, it's a great point. It, it's, I don't want to minimize with every one of these decisions, there's, that's on anything even vaguely serious in the school setting. There's a victim attached, somebody that's, you know, needs to be made to feel safe again in some cases, not all, but in our, we're committed to that. We're, we're actually probably sometimes better than that. I think that's why we talk so much what we're trying to do on the other side with keeping kids out of the system, because that's not in the, the human nature of policing professional in general. I mean, it is now, but it hasn't been for, you know, up until a few years ago, maybe.
Thank you. Director Amundson.
Thank you. I want to say. Poo, too many things to click. Camera, mute hand. Something always gets missed. I want to say how much I appreciate the commitments that were expressed by Chief Franklin, and those, you know, mean a lot to, to me, and I think our community as well. I, I think that the school district should join with similar commitments. And I want to, I want to recognize who we don't have at the table tonight, which would be the students themselves who are affected and members of communities of color. And I think that we should commit to them, to bring them to the table in this discussion. As we've been hearing from members of our community in regards to the discomfort that some students feel in police presence, I think those should be the people who join together with us to address things that can be done to improve that situation. I've spoken to students in our community directly, and they have expressed an optimism, a hopefulness, that, even an eagerness, that if we all work together and, and bring, you know, the affected parties to the table, that, that this is a problem that we can address. I think it's unrealistic to say we can solve it, because it's a, it's a very large weighty issue, but, but I think it's important for us not to just say, okay, we've had a study session about it, we've talked about it, and, you know, we're doing what we can. I think there's more that, that can be done. And I, you know, I'm just one board member, but I would invite my colleagues and the administration to also express a commitment to dive deeper into the issues and work together with our community.
Thank you. Director Barlow?
Thank you.
I said Director Barlow, and Director Workman popped up on my screen, so I got a little confused. Go ahead, Director Barlow.
One additional question, and that is in regards to a board meeting not long ago, I think in August, perhaps, we were presented by the Director of Operations a request to approve funding for the sixth SRO. And it was to be scheduled to be voted upon by the city council. Can anyone provide a status update on that and where we are regarding that?
I believe I can answer that. It was approved by the school board here, correct, Director Barlow? And so after it got approved by the school board and signed, I sent it over to the city and the Police Department. And so they are, they have it in their possession. And if the chief is willing to expand on that, what I understand from my discussions with the administration at the Police Department is the budgetary issues that the city is having, that they aren't sure that they want to move forward on that or not yet. And so it's kind of in holding right now. Chief Franklin, is that accurate?
And I can expand on that a little bit. It, it's kind of multifaceted. For example, we just hired eight new recruits. We actually have nine openings. We actually could not fill that ninth spot. And so even though we just went through a hiring class, we couldn't even get a full cohort in the door here. So it's somewhat of, certainly the budgetary issue is out there, but it's also the hiring piece out there that we can't get recruits in the door fast enough. We're looking at another recruit class for early March and hope to be full-staffed at that point. In addition, we felt the expansion of the program, kind of in the COVID era here and the unknowns, that perhaps it would be better for all of us collectively, from a budgetary standpoint, to leave it at the number five, or the five SROs currently. So that's where we stand now.
So if I may ask a follow-up then, Chair Seelinger? I don't know how to ask the question. So what, where does that leave us then? I heard clearly what Chief Franklin said, so is this now, Superintendent, could someone maybe advise us that? Thank you.
Yeah, basically, since the other half of the agreement has not been approved by the city, we fall back to the current agreement we have with the Police Department, with the five officers. And the way that contract is written, we, if nothing changes, it just rolls forward to the next year. If either party wants to change that agreement, you have until May something to notify the other party that you want to get out of that contract. So this year, we're just moving, staying with the, the contract that's been approved by both the board and the city. The other one that we approved, our half, is kind of in limbo now, so when we fall, so we fall back to the existing agreement until either the board chooses to not renew it for the 21, 22 school year, and then we would have to notify the police by May of our intentions. Or if for some reason the city does come and approve the additional officer, then that contract that the board approved would then be the one that we would follow.
Thank you, Superintendent. Director Nathan?
I want to echo Dr. Amundson's statements about moving forward and, and what we can do. And as a member of the Community Engagement Committee now, I'm looking forward to hearing more about what connections the department is making with those grassroots organizations, and how we might be able to model that, maybe in partnership with the Community Engagement Committee, and outreach to some of our student groups, to have those same kinds of conversations with the students in our buildings, especially the ones that aren't at the table tonight. So adding my name to that, supportive of that idea.
Thank you. So board members, we have enjoyed our time together for about three hours. I'm not seeing any more hands, which is just fine, not asking. I think we've covered a lot of ground. Here comes Ms. Workman. I'm teasing you about, I kind of talk slow so that somebody can raise their hand if they want to. Go ahead.
I'm sorry for, for jumping in earlier. I was just trying to affirm what Director Amundson had said about having more people at the table to continue the conversation. I think it's really important, especially to involve our students, because they are the ones who are the most impacted and affected. And I think it would be really, it's not only helpful, but I think it's really extremely important for the board to hear a number of perspectives and certainly have to include them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So Julie, you're on camera, and you're eating. Oh, it's, it's, it's a fun time here in virtual meeting land, and I start to get a little punch about the end of the night. Okay, board members, guests, cabinet staff, all of, all of you who have been here, thank you so much for all your work. I am going to bid you adieu for the evening, and I will adjourn this meeting at 7:50 PM.